Roll call.
Didla.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Stricker.
Here.
McCarrigan.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. Notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. No changes? Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency action? Closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four, fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately.
Make motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, you want a motion?
I'll second.
Second. Any comments? Okay, Kim. Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Okay, public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six P M. To consider the rezone of block one, Piper Family subdivision commonly identified as sixteen oh five west forty-second street from agricultural to R one A, single-family residential. Oh, I got to open the public hearing, correct? Okay.
Mayor and council, this rezon is for the property for second street, currently zoned agricultural, requesting a change to R one A. It's adjacent to an R one A district, so it's just an expansion. And it's aligned with the future land use map. The main reason this is getting rezoned is they could not do an agricultural state dwelling site as the field around it was already claimed by another one. Planning Commission made positive recommendation on approval of this at the March meeting. So, and then, the applicants were requesting waiver of three readings.
Any questions? Is that anybody else?
So there's no change?
No, you can go ahead.
There's no change in size of the lot or additional buildings or anything?
Yeah, everything was the same.
Okay.
It's just that several properties are built.
Okay.
They're requesting the waiver because it is, they had to set a buyer for it, so this has been going on since February, so they're kind of just holding off.
Any concerns with waiving the three readings?
No. Once you close the hearing.
Yeah, well.
Yes, I'm just curious.
No, no concerns about that. This has been through the process with planning commission notices being given.
Okay.
I think it's a two point four nine acre, and they're going to sell the that property, the two point four nine?
Yes.
That's true?
Yeah, yeah.
It did, yeah. I think we've done that before. In fact, I think one time I, it seemed silly to do more than one, the three readings. I would think that if there was somebody that had an issue with it, you would have heard by now, you've had any issues. There were no calls about anything, that they would be here. Because I always also am concerned about only one opportunity for somebody to come, but if Zach hasn't had any, I'd be comfortable with waiving the three readings.
Anyone else have anything for the public hearing? No? Do we have any exhibits?
No exhibits on this one.
Okay.
We can close it.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Resolutions and ordinances. Council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance dealing with the rezone of block one, Piper Family subdivision from agriculture to R one A, single-family residential.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the ordinance and waive three readings.
Yeah, we have to waive the three readings first.
Okay.
Then we vote on that, and then we.
Gotcha.
So read the ordinance first.
Well, no, we, we make a, we have a motion from Jerry, but we can't approve the ordinance. We have to waive the three readings.
Okay.
And then that gets seconded, voted on. Then he can make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
Once that gets waived.
So the motion is to waive the three readings.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, questions on that? Okay, Kim?
An ordinance of the city of Scottsuffolk, Nebraska, dealing with zoning, amending section twenty-five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that block one, Piper Family subdivision, situated in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section ten, township twenty-two north, range fifty-five west of the sixth principal meridian, Scottsuffolk County, Nebraska, currently zoned as A agricultural, will now be included in R dash one A, single-family, repealing prior section twenty-five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Any questions before we, we get the, yes?
No.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have any questions.
So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Jeannie, do I have a second?
Check it.
Any other questions, comments?
Did there?
We didn't do the three readings.
There was no vote.
Oh, we did not.
We just read it once.
Yes.
Then we have to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Then we can move to.
So we'll back it up.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes. So I have a motion from Jeannie and a second from Jerry to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Got through it all.
That's right.
Okay.
One more.
Not confusing at all.
Exhibits, not an ordinance.
Subdivisions and public improvements. Council to consider action on the preliminary and final plats of block one, Piper Family subdivision, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
So this is just the subdivision of the land that was just rezoned, currently provided. This will just turn into block one, Piper Family subdivision. Planning Commission reviewed this in April, made positive recommendation on approval. It's located in E T J, so no public improvements necessary.
Okay, thanks.
Questions from anyone, comments?
Pretty self-explanatory on the packet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion from Jeannie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Matt. Any other questions? Okay, Kim?
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to consider action on the preliminary and final plats of lot three A, block one, Kings Acres subdivision, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
At the March planning commission meeting, the planning commission reviewed the preliminary final plats. It's essentially just to replat. The house is located on one lot that is unplanted. The vacant lot is planted. So a preliminary plat is necessary in the whole process since there's unplanted land involved. Really just combining two parcels into one, so the property and the ability, accessory building.
Any questions or comments for Zach on this?
Just a, okay, so this is still this one?
Is that it?
No, okay, I was thinking, so this is the Peepers?
No.
No, okay, never mind.
This is just north of V S U thirteen?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions? Okay, Kim?
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, petitions, communications, and public input. Council to discuss and consider action on the change of location for liquor license from the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for P R E S Incorporated, doing business as Rositas, from twelve oh five East Overland to fourteen oh eight Circle Drive in Scottsuffolk.
Hi, I'm Ms. Mary Flores. I'm the owner of Rositas. As you've probably heard, your favorite Mexican restaurant out of the fifty there is in town is moving finally after like almost forty years, a travel guide style one. So we will be moving to fourteen oh eight Circle Drive. As of today, it looks like maybe a couple of months to open. Any questions? Oh, by the way, the best margaritas in town also. Any question? Um, I'm not going to get bigger. I'm probably actually even going to sit like maybe twenty-five less people than what I have now. So I'm not, I'm just moving locations. I'm not actually expanding, changing.
Okay.
Are you going to keep your other location open too, honey, Strublin?
No.
So what is your, what is your tendency in capacity?
Um, probably like a hundred.
Oh, wow.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm excited you're moving in. It'll be nice the space gets used.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was a little more than worth it when anticipated.
Always is.
Always is. It's coming along.
It's good.
It's exciting.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Check it.
And a second by Jerry. Any other questions? Okay, Kim?
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council to approve a special designated liquor license for Next Gen Professionals to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits on June seventh, twenty twenty-five, from three to ten for a Beer and Wine Fest at the Eighteenth Street Plaza.
Yes, I'm Maureen Galen, present from Next Gen Professionals.
I'm Dylanne Abrams, I'm a board member of Next Gen Professionals.
And we're hosting Beer and Wine Fest again this year on June seventh in Eighteenth Street Plaza and looking for other places.
So the proceeds from the Beer and Wine Fest this year will be going to Casa of Scottsuffolk County in Capstone. So does anybody have a question?
I was just going to ask you what your process is, if you're going to do wristbands?
Yes, we'll have.
You'll have security?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll have security on each of the gates, so both the alleyways and the two entrances now.
Okay.
And you guys do this once a year or twice a year?
Annually.
Annually.
Last year, and then jumping twice just because we moved it to June. And so instead of waiting a year and a half for it, we put two in one. So we went to others, I discovered a center, and then we moved to Fly Change Connection last year. So we always choose a different organization. We don't need to.
I do have a question on, for the summer events and the bands on Broadway and such. Does the city move in porta potties out there? And so those will be in their normal place uptucked against the building where D T Riker does?
Do bands on Broadway?
No, for, for this and just generally.
Yeah, we're going to have to put up with porta potties again this summer.
I was told when I asked, and I forget the name, so I apologize, when I asked about porta potties up there, they're year round.
Oh, okay.
And we re-upped the contract, I think.
Yeah, we did.
Three year round.
Three year round?
We added two.
Yeah, yeah.
And they get moved around a little bit depending on what's going on in the plaza?
Yeah, we try to keep them in that corner down.
Any other questions?
Go to a good cause.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do I have a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion from Jerry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Scott. Kim?
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on nine community festival permits for B D S three C, L L C, D B A, Flyover Brewing Company for the Eggs and Cakes Community Breakfast Events on four seventeen, five fifteen, six nineteen, seven seventeen, eight twenty-one, nine eighteen, ten sixteen, eleven twenty, and twelve eighteen, from seven to eleven A M, to include noise permit and parking a food truck in front of eighteen twenty-four Broadway.
Um, I'm Hayley. I'm also the manager at the brewing company for the summer. This is Dan.
I'm Dan, the head brewer.
Um, we're just here to ask the council for approval for festival permits so that we can have a food truck parked on Broadway for our monthly Eggs and Cakes event. We, the event is scheduled for the third Thursday of each month from seven to eleven A M. Due to the size of some food trucks, we're requesting the ability to utilize the first three spaces on Broadway in front of Flyover Brewing Company, so not to impede traffic. We've considered parking on Nineteenth Street, but as the intent is to encourage business to downtown as a whole, there will be greater visibility on Broadway in general. We plan on posting these events on social media as well as advertising through our local downtown businesses. And of course, we can post pictures of the food trucks in place to encourage monthly visits as well.
And are you already doing some of this already? Or is it just a different setup?
Yeah, we were doing it under the belief that we could immediately permit if we were not on the sidewalk.
Sure.
Um, we were told that we didn't need one. So we moved it indoors for the last couple of months so we could get this.
Okay, good.
And what is, is that, what does the Eggs and Cakes do? Does it support something? Or is it?
Well, no, it's just, we, as you know, our owners work for the hospital, and they have a lot of third shift workers who can't always go someplace. So they thought it'd be a good idea to, once a month, they open up early so that people, third shift workers can kind of have a place to go at those. Um, we do offer food trucks for other people. There've been quite a few downtown businesses that come down and just pick up our business. We have a lot of non-collectibles as well and stuff.
Are you normally open in the mornings?
No, we usually don't open till eleven. So this, this has us opening at seven A M.
Now, is this permit, this doesn't mean closing down the road, it's just for the parking, using the slots, that's okay?
And be served from the sidewalk side, I'm guessing?
Yeah, the food truck serves there. People bring their food inside or say in our patio area, taking it.
So, so what's the noise?
Um, maybe it's the generator?
Okay.
I'm not the one who's plugged for that, so I'm not, I'm not very sure. We don't get too crazy.
No bands or anything?
No, no there.
And is this one food truck vendor or various ones?
Um, right now, it's been Rositas consistently, and they've been doing really good business. People seem to like them, so we're kind of, we don't have any definite, but they've already agreed to do that.
Kevin, you have any concerns?
Okay. I think it's been going on for a little bit, pretty smooth. And I was just curious about why Thursday mornings from seven till eleven, but.
Yeah, it used to be a Friday, but we had a group of people from State Patrol and law enforcement that said that Thursdays would work better for their shipping.
Yeah.
And the people who were already coming didn't really care what day it was on. So we were going to try doing Thursdays to help.
So includes, I don't know if it's standard to include noise permit in with it, but having that must give some inkling that somebody might be concerned about it. Is, has there been a history of the, it's been, have they been parked there before?
Yeah.
In the mornings?
Yeah.
In any company?
The only thing I can think of is because it's seven A M. I don't know if that's too early for, at generators. I know there is an apartment around that area, so maybe that's where she was.
Just in case.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, Kim?
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, bids and awards. Council to consider awarding the bid for Parks Hail Damage Repair to Twin City Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and thirty cents.
The mayor and council, this is the low bid. Excuse me, it's Twin City. We did receive two bids. Engineer's estimate was one thirty-two, so we're well below that. So we're recommending that you award this bid to, to the low bidder, Twin City Roofing. They've done a lot of workforce in the past and always do a good job.
Still roof, still roofing on the building?
Um, I don't know what else on, on this one. I don't think.
Mostly still.
And we're changing one from asphalt use.
Okay. And this is from the storm two, two years ago?
Yes.
Or two summers ago?
Twenty-two. Twenty-two. June, June twenty-first or twenty-second of twenty-two, as a matter of fact. Twenty-third.
My big one was June twenty-third of twenty-three.
Yeah, it could have been.
Any other questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Matt. Any other comments, questions? Okay, Kim?
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, council to consider awarding the bid for a new walker mower for the cemetery to Panhandle Automotive in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars after trade.
So this is for a, replacing a walker mower from twenty nineteen. So we're on a, on a five-year life cycle. This is a budgeted item with the trade-in amount of seventy-five hundred. It came in well under our budgeted amount, so came in at fifteen thousand.
Do we normally trade in the mowers, our old ones?
Yeah, the walkers, yeah. Sometimes we'll bring one down to parks, and parks will trade off their old one. But this one's actually in worship and one at parks, so we're going to go ahead and trade this one in from the cemetery. But yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Scott. Do I have a second?
Yes, I have a second.
Second from Jerry. Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes. Reports from staff boards and commissions. Council to discuss and consider action on the agreement between Kirk Bernhardt and the city of Scottsuffolk for the position of softball umpire coordinator for the twenty twenty-five softball leagues and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
So this is for our city softball league this year. The city is, in general, is going to take over that league, but we still need coordinator on site. He'll be there five or six till ten or eleven o'clock on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So he helps coordinate all the umpires, all the fees for the umpires, and all of those pieces. So he big help, right puts in these ten to twelve hours for us on that.
Questions?
Yeah, the question, and this is new to me, so it's more about learning this stuff probably, but as an independent contractor than this is a contract or an agreement, is was there any R F Ps put out to give anybody else the opportunity to do that, or do we not do that?
Um, on this one, we did not. I don't know in the past if that's in the process or not.
We get somebody who we worked with in the past, and they want to do it again, and we are happy with what they've been doing. Generally, we'll ask that person if they want to continue.
Okay.
And that's what we've done. This gentleman has done this for.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a camp's host.
Okay.
Yeah. And the past couple of years, or about five years, we contracted the whole program now. So it's been between Kirk and then Chris Beesman as well. So they kind of went back and forth. And then Chris didn't have interest in doing anything this year, so Kirk stepped up and showed interest.
Okay. So it's kind of one of those where you take somebody that will offer up to do it, seems like to me.
We, we have not done an R F P for this for a number of years.
This individual has prior experience, sorry?
Yeah, we lean on him a lot. He has contacts with all the teams and everything, so he really pushes them to get signed up and all that, too.
So he actually promote the program and.
Yeah, he promotes it all this month to help get him pushed to the new civic software. So.
Okay, cool.
There's a lot of extra things that aren't included early in the contract.
So it looks like it'll be now, all the way to end of August?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll probably have mid-season, or end of season tournaments about mid-August.
Okay.
So that'll take him through that month to get the umpires all paid up and all of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Jeannie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Matt. Kim?
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes. Council to discuss and consider action on an agreement with Trevor Coxville to operate a concession stand at Lacy Park from May first to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
So this is an agreement for Trevor to run the concession stand at Lacy. As he sees fit, we have some deadlines, but no contracts in place with any vendors, so he can kind of run it how he'd like to. And return, he pays us a hundred dollar rent each month. And then he has to be open Monday through Thursday from five thirty to nine thirty.
Well, I hesitate, but I'm going to ask the same question because it's a little bit different than maybe an umpire concessions are kind of more general. And so is there any R F Ps to give anybody else the opportunity?
No, Trevor approached me as a fundraiser for their youth softball group, and so that's kind of why I led him kind of run with it. He's going to put the money that he earns there back into their program. And they just moved their program onto Lacy, so they're going to do some work out there for us and stuff. It's a good partnership.
That makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Scott and a second from Jerry. Any other questions? Okay, Kim?
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Council to discuss and consider action on a funding request from the W N C C Foundation to assist with marketing and a summer intern in support of the twenty twenty-five Monument Marathon.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Risick. I'm the foundation director at W N C C. This is the fourteenth year of the Monument Marathon. And this is the third time I'm coming before city council to request funds from Scottsuffolk County. I did send a little presentation, if that Uh, I did send a little presentation, if that, I have on my iPad, too. Oh, perfect. Okay, so just a couple slides to give you some information. Uh, most of these are stats from last year, but overall, since the beginning, the purpose of the Monument Marathon has been fourfold, uh, to highlight the beauty of the region, to promote tourism into our communities, to encourage a healthy lifestyle for those who live here, and to support WNCC students with the proceeds. So, record attendance in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, we started out just over four hundred runners in twenty-twelve and we, uh, topped six hundred in twenty-twenty-four. Um, I really feel a lot of that has to do with the city of Scottsbluff's support. We put the money from the city of Scottsbluff the last two years towards marketing and marketing this more efficiently and better, and we're seeing huge returns on that. Um, in fact, even this year, we're already seeing returns. Right now, we have a hundred and fifty runners registered, whereas previous years, it was about seventy-five to eighty at this time. So that's very exciting. Uh, tourism impact, uh, over sixty-eight percent of our runners were new in twenty-twenty-four. Every year, about sixty to seventy percent, we've gotta find all new runners to come in. And eighty percent of our runners came from outside Scottsbluff County, and the majority bring people with them, and they stay multiple nights. They, you know, they wanna see what there is to do in our community, and that's part of us showcasing the, showcasing the beauty and the history of the area. Uh, so, uh, you are one of four marketing sponsors that we request grant money from every year, the state, the county, and both cities. And last year, because we were able to bring in more runners, because we are able to do things a little bit more efficiently, I'm every year looking at how can we do things a little bit better, we had a record amount of proceeds in twenty-twenty-four. And all of those proceeds stay right here local and go directly to WNCC students. So seventy-eight thousand six seventy-two in twenty-twenty-four, for a total of six hundred and thirty-six thousand two oh eight raised for WNCC students over those thirteen, for thirteen years. So just a couple examples of why we do what we do. This is the biggest annual fundraiser for the WNCC Foundation. So this year, specifically, we are requesting, uh, funds again to go towards the marketing. Uh, and then also, so we're requesting eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. Uh, so the majority of that will go through to, um, additional marketing, and we've included a budget with that information. Um, and there are some examples before, before you get to the budget. So here are some examples of, um, some of the marketing we've done. That is the end of our video, and that has the city of Scottsbluff on there, and then additional marketing that we've sent out, um, that has been paid for in part by the city of Scottsbluff's funding. And then I believe the next item is the budget. So the green highlighted items, those top two, are additional, uh, funding for marketing. So, uh, social media outside the area, and then targeted marketing that targets people within a specific area, and then on the next page, it has that map. So this is the map that we target. Uh, we look at least fifty miles outside of Scottsbluff County, and then we've identified Salt Lake City is an area that has a lot of people who wanna do outdoorsy type things, so there's a huge draw there, and then we also target the Kansas City and the Oklahoma City area as well. Uh, we don't, we do have a lot of people who come from across the entire country. We don't target them directly because it really waters down our marketing funds. We're not big enough, we don't have enough money to blanket the entire country, but a lot of those people are coming because of word of mouth, because they've heard of us, because they follow our Facebook, and we do a lot of free Facebook advertising and posting as well. Um, and then if you could scroll back, back to the, um, budget again. So the bottom item in green there, something new that we're doing for twenty-twenty-five is we have applied to Intern Nebraska and just learned last week that we have been funded to hire a summer intern. The WNCC Foundation has four full-time staff members, and we are down one for the foreseeable future. So we're operating with three, and we're all, we're always operating, and we're very, very busy. So we are excited about bringing a summer intern in. They will focus solely on the Monument Marathon. We're looking, um, at all the Nebraska colleges, and we're looking at hiring someone who's marketing major, nonprofit, uh, management major. So we're really hopeful that we'll be able to get a great intern in, and so we're asking in part for, um, you to match the funding from Intern Nebraska to allow us to be able to bring in that, that intern.
So the eighty-seven includes the twenty-seven, essentially?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes, that's for, yeah, the eighty-seven is the full amount.
Okay. I understand Matt requested a budget?
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate it. I think it's very helpful to really see where the money's going, um, because we know you're doing that, but it's, it's nice to see that and I appreciate it.
Well, and it was important for us to, to show all of our funders and potential funders that we're not done with their thing. We're not asking you.
And for the same thing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, everyone's gonna fund something different.
Perfect.
Couple of questions whenever you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so the, so the impetus of that marketing intern is that you're down a staff member and it'll just maximize plus focus, that intern focus on that. What, uh, this is more curious, but what makes you target? I, you explained Salt Lake City, um, but Kansas City, Topeka, and Oklahoma City. What makes, what, what made you choose those?
So we work with marketing vendors and they really want, they're the ones that really have let us, helped us learn that we need to stay in a smaller area. We used, when we were doing it on our own, we just blanketed the whole country. And not really, because that's not my expertise, not really realizing we were watering down our message too much. Uh, but they identified those as three areas that within about twelve hours, someone could drive here, or it's a quick flight to Denver. All of those have direct flights to Denver, could connect here, uh, so they felt that, that. So we take that, that expertise from the marketing vendors that we work with.
So not necessarily there's a outdoorsy running community like Salt Lake, but it's more proximity?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely proximity. The majority of our runners do come from the front range. We blanket the front range with a lot of marketing and get a lot of runners from there. Our goal would be to, that every runner in Colorado knows about us and has us on their list to someday come and run, if not run multiple times.
Same course route?
Yes, same course route. We changed the route two years ago, so this will be our third year. We've got, and we only made a couple minor changes, but we've gotten very positive feedback on those minor changes.
How many volunteers does it take to run this?
Three hundred volunteers to make this event go. Every year takes a huge, um, main, both cities. Even though the route does not go in Scottsbluff at all, we do get support from the city of Scottsbluff. I know a lot of the city of Gering personnel lean on, um, the city of Scottsbluff. City of Gering, of course, takes the lion's share of the work. Um, the, the value that the city of Gering donates to us just in personnel alone is probably nine to ten thousand dollars. And, uh, so it takes a huge community effort, um, to bring all those people in. But our goals, uh, with the new marketing that we've been doing, our goals are to continue to grow this race. With the infrastructure we have in place, we could easily bring a thousand to twelve hundred runners in. Uh, we don't wanna do that all at one time, but our goal over the next couple of years, we would like to be up to seven hundred and fifty within a couple of years. And then just continue to slowly grow that. Uh, we gotta make sure there's no hotels, we've gotta make, you know, all of those things. Uh, but if we slowly grow it, it will continue to benefit the community.
And this year, you guys did a relay?
We did a relay, we started a relay in our tenth year, so this will be the fourth year, the fifth year, actually, of the relay. Uh, the relay has been pretty small. It hasn't picked up like some of the other race distances, uh, but the course itself doesn't, it doesn't really lend itself to a ten K the way the course is. Uh, so we had a five K, a half marathon, and a full marathon. And people were often requesting a distance kind of in between. So that relay has a four and a half mile, a five mile, and a three point five mile. So it does give a few other distances. And allows the runners to get behind the monument without running a full thirteen miles.
Funds available?
Um, we do have community programming funds available. Yep.
This is, so we've had a couple of other ones on there. Do, do you know kind of the balance of that?
I do. Um, actually, the, we've had one, and that was the old West Bloom Fest.
Okay.
And that was for twenty thousand dollars. This is for eighty-seven fifty. You're about to hear another one for fifty-one hundred. And if you approve, um, these, these next two, it'll leave us a balance of sixty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So we're, we're getting close to summer, so.
Imagine people that are wanting, that are coming, uh, have Kim or, or?
Right now?
Yeah. And community programming is occupational tax. Uh, when we passed the occupational tax, there was, uh, an agreement to put some of that back towards tourism, which is exactly what we're doing. So this fits very well.
Jim, you had your data that sixty percent stay at least one night. Um, do you know how many stay more than one day?
Um, I could get you that data, but we do ask people, and we have a number of them that'll stay five or more.
Oh, okay.
Interesting.
And we have people that'll bring five or more people with them. Uh, so there are many people that come, bring their family. Uh, family members will run the five K and then they stay and they go see all the sites.
Do some of them come and get acclimated, uh, pre-race and?
Yes, in fact, last year, we had somebody contact me from Colorado, and she wanted to know details about the course because they were, she and her husband were coming up for the weekend, so they could check out the course about a month and a half before the race. So people that are close enough, sometimes they'll come here a couple of times. And then we often hear about people coming back. They love the area, many people have never been here, and then they wanna come back and do other things.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion from Jerry, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Matt, any other comments or questions? Okay, Kim?
Stricker?
Yes.
Midla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a funding request from three oh eight United Softball to assist with umpire lodging and fees for the annual Summer Slam softball tournament.
Hello?
Hi there.
My name is Krista Sarchet. I am, um, the current board president for three oh eight United Softball. Um, this is our second complete season, uh, actually, third, but second as a board. Um, and we are requesting funding to help with our Summer Slam softball tournament. Um, I do have a presentation on it, I realize I've got a major pickle on the first page. I said it's sixty-five years, so five years, it's supposed to be in five years. We've had a hundred and forty-seven teams, approximately forty-four hundred people that have, um, come to the Panhandle for this tournament. Um, it really, um, started previously under the Broadway bombers, um, uh, out of a necessity in twenty-twenty with COVID. Nebraska was allowing tournaments, Colorado was not. So, um, we had a huge influx of teams that came up to the Panhandle. Um, yep, uh, so what we really try to focus on is, is we wanna have a very competitive tournament, but we wanna have a really, uh, a fun tournament. We moved it a couple of years back to the weekend before the Fourth of July, and we've really tried to focus on creating a family-friendly event, um, that really promotes the Panhandle and everything that we have here, because a lot of these teams are coming now from Rapid City, Colorado, Wyoming, um, that don't often, um, come to the, the, the Panhandle for sporting events. So we're really proud of that. Um, let me scroll down to my page. Um, there we go. Um, so during twenty-twenty-three, sports travelers in the U.S. spent a combined fifty-two point five billion dollars on sports-related travel. Um, the statistics that I found there, um, said on average, three hundred and seventeen dollars per person, for overnight stays and seventy-five dollars per person for trip, for day trips. So what I, I did there is just over the last two years, I kinda went through and, and said, you know, if half of those teams that came, um, so in twenty-twenty-three, there were thirty-four teams, six of those were local teams, so I just took those completely out of the mix and said, okay, if there were twenty-eight teams, and fourteen of them were traveling in and staying overnight, with an average of twelve players, um, with female athletes, they say that they'll run on average two point five people with them. Um, with male athletes, it's about point nine. Take this out, we will. But, so just trying to kinda do the math on that and what, what kind of money we're seeing come into the Panhandle here, um, and list some of the, the towns that we're seeing. Um, you know, right now, Rapid City, we started, we were super excited like two years ago when we saw our first Rapid City team. Now we've got three different teams coming from Rapid. You know, we're seeing, um, Laramie alone this year, I think we ended up with like three twelve U teams, which blows my mind from Laramie that they, that they're kind of growing that fast, it's exciting. But, uh, just to kinda give you an idea of where they're coming from, um, we are getting, like, we've got Hastings team that comes out that we're really excited for, um, and we're getting more out of Colorado. Um, on the next slide, um, I did go and kind of look at the lodging taxes going back to the year before. Um, you know, when there were zero teams, what Scottsbluff County brought in for lodging taxes, and I won't hash that out too much, but you'll see that huge jump in twenty-twenty, when on a national level, there was a, an incredible decrease in lodging taxes collected. So Scottsbluff County, we did see the one hundred thousand dollar increase. You see where we had that big jump in thirty-two teams that came in that first year. And then you'll notice that even though our lodging taxes did increase, and, and I just looked at June because we usually run that last, well, we had been about Father's Day for a while, I think it was, and then we moved. So stuff with June here. Um, you'll see that even though we did start to see some teams decline, we still had an increase in lodging taxes. Um, but in twenty-twenty-three, the next slide, um, oh, no, sorry, I jumped ahead, but in twenty-twenty-three, we did make a major shift in how we approached our tournament. Um, and the next slide just does kinda talk about the weekend events. Um, we started doing a team skills relay competition, a home run derby, and we do all of that at night. Dan Fox, our high school coach, um, here at Scottsbluff, gets on the microphone and does his thing and just kind of, it ends up being a lot of fun this year, we wanna add a coaches' competition. Um, we do do on Saturday a free barbecue. Um, it was supposed to be just kinda for the players and the coaches, but it has morphed into just everyone. We grill, I don't, I should have gotten that number, I don't know how many burgers and, um, hot dogs we grill, but it just kind of, again, plays into that family atmosphere of, um, you know, they do go out and eat a lot in the community, but kind of having all the kids there and, and having a good time. But in twenty-twenty-three, we really took a look at the umpires that we were bringing in, and we hired, um, Alan Toof, no, you could go, yeah, there we go. Alan Toof is up there on the right, um, he is our UICR umpire in charge. He's actually, um, a high school umpire out of Shadrin, um, that we've all kinda come to know and love. He gets a team of umpires that he brings in. Uh, previously before that, it had been local kids, um, which was a fantastic learning opportunity, but if you don't have quality umpires, the level of play goes down. And then you have parents yelling at kids, if there's not quality umpires, they're not gonna come back. So we realized that we really had to change the way we were approaching. We went from paying twenty to twenty-five dollars a game. Um, umpires last year were getting fifty dollars. We want to up that this year to sixty dollars per game. We run three umpires on championship games and they get seventy-five dollars per game. Because they have to travel. Um, but that, if you look at those numbers, then we went from eighteen teams, we're back up to thirty-two teams. Last year, we were at forty teams. Our goal this year was to hit forty-eight. I think my presentation said we were at thirty-five. Today, we're at forty-three. So we're really excited, um, the ten U division, which is a very late-registered group, um, because they're just kinda figuring things out. We're still only about half, half the number of teams in that division that we normally see. So we're seeing the high school division increase, um, we've only got room for one more in our twelve U division. Um, and that just, that, that helps us grow and expand. I've started talking to Matt about the possibility using Lacy Fields. We're looking at helping with carpenter center fields to get those back up and going, um, to really kind of just keep pumping back. We use the Gering fields already. Um, so I know this year, my, my budget that I think is on the next slide. Um, those umpire fees and those hotel rooms were based off of last year's numbers, which we've already, um, exceeded that for the teams registered. Um, all of those are outlined, you know, out-of-state teams coming in, so that will be more hotel rooms being utilized. But that also means we've already got more umpires hired. So umpire fees alone, you know, we're looking at probably close to twenty thousand dollars this year. Um, for their fees, we'll need more hotel rooms. We provide food and water for them during the day. So we're requesting right now fifty-one hundred to help us cover that. Um, we've started putting a lot more into our boards, too. We've started, last year, we did rings as well as plaques and, and doing some stuff for the kids that we think will have a little bit more meaning, so. You have any questions?
So it's growing, um, are there enough fields available to handle the growth?
Yes, so last year, um, we only utilized Gering for, I think it was just Saturday. And then we tried to move all the teams over to Scottsbluff to try to, try to keep parents from having to tra, travel back and forth. We're not gonna be able to do that this year. I think our twelve U division, um, I think the plan is twelve U and ten U will all play in Gering, and then fourteen in the high school divisions will play at twenty-three club and the Scottsbluff High School fields. What we run into is like Scottsbluff High School only has field, there are lights on one field, which kinda stinks. Um, twenty-three club, actually, we'll have to maybe keep ten U here because there's one field there that the base paths are smaller, but it has to be ten U, and, and the fence is short enough, so. It becomes, it's a jungle act for sure, especially making sure that we've got umpires for all the fields, because we try to run three umpires per field, and then we just let them rotate through. So there's, there's one that's always getting a break, and then one sits out, and so you only ever umpire two games in a row before you get out of the sign because that was last weekend in June, it was pretty tough, so.
And so, so far with the forty teams you had, that's without using Lacy Field?
Yeah, that was with that. And, and I don't know that we're really at, we're not at the point for this year to use Lacy. It's kinda a big picture for me. Um, one of the tournaments that we go to is in Rapid City, and I think they have two hundred and fifty teams that come in, and that's just the softball, there's a baseball tournament that we get to, it's absolutely insane. Um, you know, not that we'll get to that point, but I would, I would love to hit, you know, fifty teams next year and just keep increasing a little bit. But again, it's hotels and, you know, making sure we got space because we always kinda run into the gravel by grace in town at the same time. But we, um, most often during the Gering tournament and our Scottsbluff tournament, we've had, uh, college scouts that had to stay in Kimball, that were coming in to watch players because we're just, we look up, it's pretty cold to see more of it.
So I guess I got a question for Kevin or anyone on the staff. What's our capacity for hotel rooms? How many do we have available?
Oh, I don't know, I wanna say a hundred and twenty-some off the top of my head. Anybody remember that number? They did a study, the, the sports study.
They did a study, the, the sports study.
Yeah, for the county tourism.
Okay.
Yeah. I think they identified the need for them.
And do you know how many total games then you guys do at your tournament?
Oh my goodness, it's a round for games.
Okay.
It is, it's, because we do a two-cool play and then we do double elimination, so every team is guaranteed four games.
Is it three days?
Um, yeah, we will start at noon on Friday. And last year, when we, when we worked so hard to get everybody, and we ran into not enough umpires last year too, became another thing, I think our championship games were running at like five and six o'clock on Sunday. The Garing Tournament that we were part of last year and not this year, my team and twelve U played the championship game, and we got done at ten-thirty on Sunday night, our championship game. And we need Gillette that had to drive home. Go off the court and they were going to be so tired, but.
Does, is Garing contributing anything to this, have you asked them?
We will, and I apologize, because somebody else on the board has done that in the past, so I don't remember if they, I know last year they helped with hotel rooms for the Garing Tournament, but that's not us this year, that is a separate person that is no longer a part of our organization, so I'm not sure.
Just curious.
We've kind of been working on another project for some capital funds that's taken a lot of progress.
And so far, how many of the teams this year are local versus out of town?
So there's six with our three oh eight United group, and that has grown to where we've got players from Torrington, Shadrin, and Alliance this year. And I think we might have one coming up from Colorado that's going to be joining the team. And then there's the Western Nebraska Fury, which is a Garing team, so those are, there will be seven local teams. It's exciting, I think we're kind of building a name for ourselves up there, just for our softballs.
Any questions for Krista?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Got a motion from Jeannie, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Matt, any other questions? Okay, Kim?
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the Tri-City Stormwater Media twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six contracts and authorize the mayor to sign the contracts.
Mayor and council, every year, Tri-City Stormwater needs to renew the media contracts in the past, KWGN and NBC Nebraska, which is now KGWN. Tri-City Stormwater consists of Scottsbluff, Garing, Terrytown, and Erre Estate. We have to do public education, so as part of that, compared to years past, that'd be significantly reduced as we're cutting back to the, um, about twenty thousand. So it'll be sixteen, it wasn't total, instead of thirty-six, which usually is. The way it works is Scottsbluff will sign off on these contracts, and then Garing and Terrytown will reimburse Scottsbluff for their percentages, and as you see, it's sixteen thirty-five of five.
Questions for Zach?
So the, the total is sixteen thousand, six hundred?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Alrighty, so I've, I've taken that typo on the Scottsbluff on the fur, right below KWGNTV streaming internet, the first bullet, which is a zero, is that, that just a typo on there, sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty, right there?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions, Krista? Do I have a motion to approve?
She'll move.
A motion from Jerry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Scott, any other questions or comments? Okay, Kim?
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a professional service agreement between the city of Scottsbluff and Frontline Mobile Health, PLLC, for firefighter hazmat wellness physicals and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Shango, Department. This is in agreement with Frontline Mobile Health to provide hazmat wellness physicals that are required to provide our team members. In the past, we've utilized the hospital as our provider. They can't, with just the nature of what this NPA standards require, the hospital can't quite achieve all of the testing and, and items required for those physicals. So we found this company in partnership with Nebraska Fire Chiefs, and got a chance to evaluate them and actually go and go through an entire physical, and it is by far the most comprehensive physical I've ever met through, meeting all of the fifteen eighty standards of the National Fire Protection Association. So in discussion with them and, and looking at what they had to offer, and we came up with this agreement, and it's before you to put consideration in, offer is inside. One of the big parts of this is that they are mobile. Unfortunately, because they're not licensed in Nebraska currently, we will actually have to travel to Colorado to one of their locations there for this year, but the hope, hope is the next year that they'll be able to come to us and do it onsite for us, just the, the following years, the subsequent years. I know some of the other Nebraska departments are heavily looking at this as well, and if they get enough volume, they'll actually open up a clinic in tree, so.
So Tom, are all your firefighters then hazmat certified?
Yes.
So the, the estimated amount is seventeen, eight fifty, what you're asking for, is that a solid amount, or is that a?
That's based on the, the fee schedule that they provided, so they charge nine hundred and fifty dollars per person, and then we've also added on the heavy metal testing, which is an additional hundred dollars.
Each?
Each, yeah. So it'd be eleven, or, I'm sorry, ten fifty for, for each firefighter. There is, there are some other tests that we could hop into if we determine we need them in the future, but at this, this point, we think it's comprehensive enough to not, not need those tests.
And then are they good for one year, or is it?
Correct, this is an annual.
Okay.
And the seventeen, eight fifty include that heavy metals, or no?
Yes.
Okay. And does it include travel to Colorado?
That seventeen, eight fifty does not include the travel. That's a hard one to estimate, so I didn't put it in there because I didn't want to mislead anything, so there will be some overtime, no rules and travel. But they get all of this testing done in one day. So currently, it looks like the schedule would be about mid-June, sixteen through the twentieth. So we can break it up into appropriate shifts and keep coverage and then allow, so we'll probably utilize three days, two, two to three days to get everyone covered. Our plan is to send everybody in a van and knock it out. It's, it's quite an interesting process that they have. When I went down to Loveland to evaluate this with Lincoln Fire, they had one of us doing this testing, another one doing this testing, and they just kind of round-robin' it, and there was four of us, they got done in about three hours.
Wow.
So they're, they're pretty efficient with this, and very, very comprehensive. That included an ultrasound of all the major organs, and called, incorporated a physical exercise test, chest X-ray, blood draw, regular vitals, and then a forty-five minute consultation with the physician, so.
Nice.
Part of that consultation also includes a mental health component, which is something that's important, really, really important.
Yeah. And then Tom and twenty-six, they'll come to us and they'll do it at the Public Safety Building?
That's, that is our goal, is for twenty-six, that'll, they'll be mobile and licensed in Nebraska and come do it at the Garing and Terry.
Nice. Well, I'm never short on curious questions. The amount, budget of a hundred and, a hundred thousand versus the seventeen, that's a big old stretch.
So it was a swag.
Okay.
Back in twenty twenty-three, the hos- the hospital used to provide our physicals at no charge, and back in twenty twenty-three, the CEO at that time wanted to cancel all contracts of that nature. And so we, nobody was really sure how much the physicals would cost, so when we budgeted, we just kind of swagged it and said, based on some other estimates that we had gotten a hundred thousand should cover it, and it did, and more than covered it for last year's physicals. If I think we spent just over fifty thousand or, right around fifty thousand last year. But we still hadn't had the, the invoice from last year by the time we did budget again, so we just budgeted a hundred thousand again for this physical. I know it's kind of unusual power.
And so this year, the seventeen thousand, is actually a pretty good deal then?
It seems like a screaming deal to me, compared to what you just said.
Okay.
It's about a third of the cost per firefighter.
And how many do you have do it?
Fifteen, but we've actually had it in sixteen for this year.
Okay.
Other questions for Tom?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I get a motion to approve? Got a motion from Scott, do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Jerry, any other questions? Okay, Kim?
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes. Almost done, guys. Council to discuss and consider action on approving the bid specifications for the purchase of one new half-ton crew cab four-by-four pickup truck for the Public Works Department and authorize the city clerk to advertise for bids to be received until April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at eleven AM.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Doug Opper, Public Works. Uh, we're looking to get a pickup for the Public Works Department. The current one will get passed down to the street department for re-doing this latest work, that sort of stuff. The one they have, are currently using is a ninety-nine model, so it needs to be upgraded. Any questions?
So thi- this is, as I understand, it's a, it was in the budget, that's why we're?
No.
Talking about it.
Right. There was a surplus from a couple of larger items coming in, were less than expected.
And we're just approving bid specs tonight?
Just bid specs.
Yeah.
Since this wasn't budgeted, I wanted to put it on the agenda so that we could discuss that here, but there is plenty of money in the budget left over from other projects to cover this.
So, but I have a question based on a couple of assumptions. And the, the assumptions are, is that this is, I understand from talking to you, Kevin, this is for, this is for your year, you as the director? Um, does, um, does, uh, it's a transition now, but, so I don't know how to say, is Mark, do you have a vehicle?
I do, yes. Yep.
And?
And that'll go down with the crew?
That's the one that's?
That'll go down with the crew, the ninety-nine needs to go. It's like a hundred and eighty thousand miles on a nineteen eighty-nine, we need to pass mine down. I would say the damage didn't, it'll be perfect though for the painters and the tapers and stuff.
Those kind of things.
Something for your new Public Works Director to have.
How many miles does that?
Uh, seventy-five thousand.
Okay. Well, it, yeah, it makes sense, I guess, to, for painting and taping, to use an older one. To me, I, I just wasn't sure, and so I'm good with it.
Yeah, it, because those take a pretty good beating out there, you know, at some point it's time for them cones in there for tar, and you have your painters in there. So it's time to pass down the used ones and then the new ones. As they get older, six years out, seven years out, then they'll pass those down. And we, we just keep the new ones coming, but pass the, the older vehicles down to the crews.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Kim?
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, council reports, information only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Do I have any updates, information?
You want to go first? So I can do the zoo one here. So they've had quite a few changes, and it kind of worked out that we had the, I missed the last meeting because there were some more items that occurred, but I'll go through them pretty quick. So I did go into March, attended their board meeting, they are working on the master plan, so that, you know that, Kevin, that's in the works, and they're staying in contact with Denver. They've got a liaison from the Denver Zoo, and he's going to help them, kind of get that finalized for you. March members are up, it was kind of a little bit bleaker in February because of the weather, and then they're kind of excited because going into the summer season, they've got seventeen school groups already signed up, so the numbers are looking good. There's a new website coming out, May first, I can't remember the company name. They're going to redo the website, and then they're going to put the ability to do like online booking, and you can get your tickets, and then if you want to do the zoo encounter and like feed the animals and, and book a slot in there, you can all do that digitally. And then they're also doing new website signs, I should, should say signs out in front of the zoo, and Whiting Science has got some new signs, and they're up, and they're along the highway to kind of draw more people in. The swans, the two swans from last year are going to be released in Oregon. They're much bigger than what I was expecting, but they'll be going out soon to Oregon, and they're in great shape. Kit, the fox, has kind of disappeared for a few weeks, and people are starting to worry if he died or something, Kit's fine. He, he's an escape artist, so he's been digging out of the enclosure, well, not out, but he's been trying to. So they removed all the dirt, and they've put in a cement, one-inch layer of cement under there, so he can't escape, or, and he's contained in there. And then they, while he was out, they took advantage of that, and they've done a lot of their improvements into the cage area. So there's the cement they put in, they got some welding work done while he was out for a while, while they've been doing this. This is just today, so I think he just went back in. And so they built a lot of new stuff, they put all new soil and mulch in there. That little ladder area, that's kind of an area he can look out, he likes to peek through the glass and watch all the visitors, so that's been added. The next one, I think, we'll show you, they've also put an underground den he can go into. And then because he does like to dig, there's one area they just left to dirt, and if he wants to dig, I mean, he can't go anywhere, but he gets it out of his system, so. This is the new concession stand, I think they started on this last year, and Twenty-First Century Equipment, and Owen Paul donated money, so they put in insulation and siding, and then the big one, if you've done home repairs, is electrical, is expensive. And so Twenty-First Century Equipment covered the cost, and that's all been wired in, so it's ready to go for the summer, and they're looking at as another revenue stream, as they're trying to improve the revenue. Let's see, oh, little miss, she's getting bigger. And so the big concern, you know, I brought that up with the zoo director, is the other mountain lion in Jasper is a lot bigger, and he's confident he can get them integrated together. There's a process they have to do, he's done it with cheetahs and other big cats when he worked in South Africa. And so a lot of it's just scent, and then getting acquainted with each other. So right now, she is in the cat house, her only outdoor access right now is those chutes that was put in by Desiree. And so she can, they can see each other, they can smell each other, and then the next step is they get used to each other a little more, they'll move to that inner area that's inside the cage, and they'll have some access, but it's going to be a while till she's big enough that they can fully introduce her and put her in with Jasper, they want to make sure size-wise she's good, and Jasper needs to get neutered so that everything's good. Yeah. Raj, we just, we were there last week, which I'll show you here in a second, Raj is doing fine. He is really easygoing, he used to have a tiger that used to real get grumpy whenever strollers went by or anything like that, and Raj is very laid back, except for if you go to the next one. He does like to chase the little zoo golf cart he brings around. And so he is a playful cat, but he is a big cat, he's gotten bigger since he came in the fall. And the very last one is at the bottom, so Garing's Student Council, we went over there last week, and we only had ten people, so I wasn't sure how many eggs we were going to get done, the Easter egg advance are coming up on the eighteenth. And we got one thousand five hundred eggs done an hour, we just went like crazy. But to give credit, Scottsbluff High School has done four thousand eggs, and so the Air Force, our OTC program, and there's an English teacher that's involved, they've been putting a lot of eggs out. they've been putting a lot of eggs out, and their goal is to add 18,000 eggs for everybody that comes for the Easter events, and those are coming up soon. They'll do two events each day, I think it's a Friday and a Saturday, but there'll be a lot of eggs. So, and then the last part is just, you know, I would say meeting with them, the morale's better, things are moving forward. Two years ago, I came in on it, and I was really wondering what I walked in on, it was quite a deal. But it's definitely made progress, so things are moving forward.
Good. Is that Raj the one you see playing on Facebook with
Oh, yeah.
in the water?
Yep, he likes to play.
Anyone else have any updates?
Are you done?
I'm done.
I wanted to introduce Jenny Heimel, you appointed her to the LB840 Citizen Review Committee. So Jenny, any idea how many hotel rooms there are in the community?
So the, I worked at the Holiday Inn Express for over 20 years, so the Holiday Inn has 70, the Hampton has 81. The Fairfield is between 70 and 80. And then there's the
Comfort and
The Comfort Inn, and then this is the Super Eight.
Yeah.
I would say like at least 300 hopefully.
200, so that's way off.
Okay.
And they didn't, they didn't count all of the motel rooms either, I mean, they
Oh, sure. Yeah, so those events have come, the Monument Marathon's huge for this area. We sell tons of hotel rooms for extended days. Also, the softball and baseball tournaments are huge here, not just for hotels, but restaurants, gas stations, our community as well, so.
Awesome.
So Jenny will be on the LB840 Citizen Review, taking Scotty's place. And she now runs Scotty's and Didiya?
Yeah, sure. And he's one of the things to do, so.
Yeah, yeah, she needs more, so.
Yeah, I just love Scotts Bluff as a whole, you know, as a community, I want our, you know, younger people to stay here, people to move here, but to be happy places, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys have any more questions, let me know.
Anyone else have any updates, anything? Okay, do I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.